Okay, can everyone hear me okay? Yep, okay, good. Okay, so first I just need to do roll call to see who's present this evening. So when I call your name, say "present." Eric?
Present.
Carrie?
Present.
Scott?
Present.
Francine?
Present.
Jason? Yeah, you're muted, hon. There you go, go ahead.
Present.
Okay. And myself, Sonia, I'm present. Daisy will be coming on a little later. She's just finishing up work. So it's 7:10 PM. We have a quorum and we can begin with the pledge. You're more than welcome to keep your microphones on for this, so we can all be heard. Okay. My pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. The Republic. The Republic, which is stand. One nation, under God. And justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. All right, so now we're just going to begin. The purpose for this evening is we have a work session to discuss the NISBA convention and as well as recap the survey that went out to the community and the part of it that had to do with the board. And then we have exec after. So to start off, what I'll do is if it's okay, I'll start off with the, we'll start off with the NISBA part, since Daisy's not here yet. And if it's okay, I will do the resolutions first. I'll just recap that. If you remember, we had a work session and a very detailed discussion about that. Also, if any time you guys can't hear me, or just start waving at the screen or something if my sound goes nutty. Okay, so. So just quickly, I'll say, everything that we discussed went the way we wanted the vote to go, except for one. But I'll just go through them real quick. So I'm actually gonna screen share this part. Hold on, see if I can do this correctly. All right, so this has to be in the background, he said. Hold on. This one. That, then this, then screen share. Oh, I get to choose from here, sorry. Okay, this one. Share this. See what happens. Did that work? Y'all see that? Okay, good. So. Okay, I thought it might make it easier. Let's see if I can. No, I have to scroll from here. Got it. Okay, so. I'll let you guys just, I'm not going to read through each one, since we can all go back to our own notes on the conversation we had. I will just go through maybe like five of them, just to share what happened. So. Number four here. We had a discussion on this as well. And just to point out, the conversation was, for each of these resolutions, was similar to our own when we had that work session. We were kind of reflective of the rest of the state and even our own board and how we were on two, you know, different sides of the issue. So this one did pass, but it was amended. The language, which is not here, I, it was too many pages with the amended stuff, so I just pulled this up and I thought I would just read the amendment. So it says, "NISBA seek legislative and/or policy changes that would mandate local industrial development agencies to include affected school districts in the development and/or," so that's what was included, "extension of any payment in lieu of taxes agreements. This inclusion must be initiated at the earliest possible was included stages of any pilot consideration." So they just felt that it clarified that resolution a little more by including that language. Okay, we can move on to number six. Six. Okay, so this one was also adopted with an amendment, actually with two amendments. So we also wanted some language clarity on this. So, and also they were not taking any amendments from the floor that live unless they had been submitted in advance and they were able to put them on the screen having already previously been submitted. So I wasn't able to change, add any of the language we discussed. So if for whatever reason they're virtual again next year, it would be good to have this conversation, well, you know, the one we had in the work session a little bit earlier, just to make sure we can get our language in there as well. If it's live, I can go right up to a mic in the moment and do it. I wasn't able to do that. But anyway, okay, so number six. This one was amended to say, "NISBA support proposals to provide resources to expand opportunities and capacity for online learning, provided that they increase opportunities and do not decrease current level of instruction." So those are the two separate amendments. There was just concern that nobody wanted to see current instruction be affected by any possible changes. Okay. If anyone has questions, just, you know, interrupt me, or if you have questions on any of the resolutions, you can ask me how it went. I wrote down the percentages of how the votes went, the number of people and all that stuff as well. Okay. Number thirteen. So this one. This was the one that we did not go. We had said no. I did vote no. There was discussion on this. I wasn't able to, again, to bring up the removal of that bidirectional piece. If you all remember that discussion, we didn't like the fact that it was a two-way exchange. And basically, when the argument, people who present it, so the district that presents it gets up and kind of presents its case in defense as to why they want the resolution to pass. And all I can say is they made a good enough argument, because even though I voted no, it passed with 95% and only 5%, therefore, of a no vote. So overwhelming majority appreciated the language the way it was. They liked the two-way conversation. So, yeah. Okay. Not much more to be said about that. Again, none of this means this will happen necessarily. It means that they're going to push for these resolutions to happen. Okay, fifteen is the next one. Otherwise, everything just passed without, I mean, there was discussion for everything. We were there for hours, but these are the ones that stood out for me, for our discussion. So fifteen, okay. This was amended. Okay, "NISBA seek to support legislation that would provide funding for suggested, not mandated, training and certification to provide parent advocates with knowledge and resources to support their advocacy work for parents and students in their attendance at state Committee on Special Education Meetings and Hearings, if that made sense." But that's the language. So they wanted clarifying language. They, people felt strongly about the language of suggested, not mandated, training, so that districts could decide on their own and that that would allow for flexibility in how people choose to manage this, but regardless, there would still be legislation for it. So I don't know, I don't know how strong legislation is if it's suggested, but that was that one. Let me just see real quick. That one, just so you know, because I know we also had a discussion, it passed 72% to 29%. Okay. Next one. Eighteen. Hold on. See back. Oh, eighteen was amended also. Hold on, okay, so eighteen passed with the amendment. "NISBA oppose mid-year state aid cuts and to advocate for additional funding from both state and federal governments to compensate school districts for COVID-19-related expenses for the 2021 school year to allow for additional continuity." So originally, we said yes to the original language. Then when they changed it, it passed 99% to 1%. Personally, I had an issue with the fact that they were only saying for the 2021 school year, because we don't know the long-term effects of COVID and it could go and feed into the following school year. So I thought it was limiting. I suppose next year for resolutions, they could amend this or create a new one to continue advocating for support, but I just had wished they didn't put that 2021 school year in there. It passed, like I said, with that amendment, 99%. Okay. Then the remaining ones were these that had to do with, they were not recommended for adoption. So none of them, they all, none of them were adopted. But I do want to just point out, one of them, well, two. Twenty-five and twenty-six. So if you recall, we had our own lengthy discussion about BOCs and the involvement. What did it say here? Laws promote competition, right, between BOCs? And with, between twenty-five and twenty-six, the only real difference is the for and between BOCs versus just between BOCs. So Pleasantville got up and defended the resolution and why it should be something put forward. And it was voted down to not have it go forward for adoption with a 60/40 split, 60% to 40% voting to not adopt it. So then when Arslay got up to defend twenty-six, they kind of saw the discussion that happened and why people were choosing to vote down twenty-five. So they kind of tweaked their defense of why this still should be a resolution. And before I tell you what happened, this one barely passed, meaning it was not adopted, but it only passed 53% to 47%. So, and we ran out of time. Twenty-seven never even was open for discussion. We lost the quorum. But what happened was, it was the group was starting to understand their logic for why they put these forward. And the argument was made that our job is what's best for kids, period. It's not supposed to be, you know, who does what, where, how, or because we have a thing with BOCs. It really should be wherever we can get the best service for whatever we need for our kids is where we need to go for that and the story. And if our BOCs, for whatever reason, is in the best, or someone else is doing something better or different, or, you know, in that non-instructional piece, then we should have it be able to do it without that waiver, which was the issue. They didn't want to have to use the waiver. It was mentioned that the big five upstate, they already can do this now. They don't, they wouldn't need this resolution to be adopted, because they already have that right to choose. And some of the things they presented in their experience. You know, I don't know that we've had these experiences, but what they shared were things like superintendent search. They wanted to use a different BOCs. Well, their BOCs was delaying that waiver approval. And I think they said they had to wait three weeks to even be acknowledged. So it delayed their own process for a search. Even though I think it was ultimately granted, but it was just, they felt they were like playing politics with it. And another issue was, they, again, they weren't specific in what thing happened, but it was their opinion based on some experience that in whatever situation, BOCs perhaps overbids. So while BOCs is adable to us, I think it's 40% that we get a reduction of cost. They felt that they're overbidding that to us, so that even though we get a 40% off and it's still cheaper, they can hike up their prices, because they know that we're getting that 40% off. So they just felt that they've seen some nuanced pieces to how BOCs works that they felt was inappropriate, and that's why they pushed for this. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. That's kind of a brief, quick overview of what was four hours. But if anybody has questions or anything on any of these, let me know. Right now, I'll answer it. Otherwise, we can move on to sharing what we learned at the convention. Any questions? Nothing? No one? Okay. So let me see how to, how do I unshare the screen and get back to?
There's a stop sharing in red.
Good, you're all, we see each other now?
Yes.
Hello, Daisy. Did you, so you just joined us? I just need to write down the time you joined us.
I believe it was like 7:15, 7:18.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So. Scott, Eric, myself, Dr. Banlow, whenever she could, because she was holding the fort down in the district as well, attended the seminars and we were texting each other and jumping into different seminars and trying to make sure we covered as much as we could during that time. So I'll take a break from talking for a minute. If either Scott or Eric want to start us off, if you want to share, maybe just thinking the titles of some of the seminars you attended, and then if you want to share what you think would be helpful for us to all hear about, or Dr. Banlow to hear about.
Scott, you want to go first? Do you want me to? Well, since you're not, you haven't.
I can never agree with Eric. It's very unlikely he'll get his mic done in time, so let's let him go.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so three days, three sessions a day. The first session I attended was regards to goal setting for the board, which obviously is a process that we just, that we just went through. I'll say, just as an overview on a lot of these things, a lot of things jumped out at me that sounded very familiar from what we've done in the past. A lot of guidance that they were giving were things that we have incorporated, or we've been doing here. So that was encouraging to see. I also sat in on a lot of the legal issues, and I'll go through what the different ones were, but a lot of the legal issues, which was interesting, but also with the understanding that if we were to face some of these similar situations, we'd be getting our own legal advice from our own attorneys. And so, not to mention the fact that the variables and the fact patterns are also different in all of these cases, and that's actually one of the, one of the things that I talked about, that they went into that. It's very hard to draw straight lines from one case to another. And, you know, our legal team was, would be guiding us under those. But, so as far as board goal setting is, was talked about, you know, basically using your goal setting to come up with a plan that we need to have a plan, which we've done. You know, we're obviously finishing our previous plan and moving directly into the next plan. So the idea to gather input from the school and the school community and the community at large, and to make sure that we work collaboratively with the superintendent, the administrators, which again, is I think something that we we do very well. They talked about the difference between goals versus objectives. Goals, they said, provide direction, whereas objectives define strategies. So goals sort of have more of the wide-range view, whereas objectives are measurable and attainable type of things. They went through the planning process, which I know we're engaged with as we go through our new strategic plan. Step one, I don't know how detailed you want me to go in on this. But you're muted.
Whatever you think is.
I mean, I went, you know, we all went to nine sessions. I don't want to go through the whole thing.
Yeah, just whatever's kind of new and helpful, insightful.
Okay, yeah. So they encouraged basically a 10-step plan, which is pretty close to the one that we're using for our our new strategic plan, includes things like a needs assessment, goal, mission, and vision statements. A lot of planning, a lot of smart goals were discussed. And and then obviously to monitor the plan once it's been inputted and make adjustments as necessary. Kind of to really make sure that what we thought was a good idea before we started the plan continues to be a good idea going forward. The second one I attended was in regards to mental health and school safety. I did actually two different mental health mental health sessions. So in this one, am I, hold on. So one was, one was, hold on, let me make sure I get this right here. This first one was set by, basically, there was the education, the education people, and then the psychology people, who both spoke on the idea of mental health and school safety. Hang on one second. Oh, I know what I did wrong. Okay, better fixed it, sorry. So just sort of the idea of mental health and the impact that it has on the school environment. The number one cause of death for school-age students, and those slightly out of school, is accidental, but the second is suicide. So this is obviously an issue that is extremely important and extremely relevant for what we're doing to create a safe community. They talked about sort of mental health and the need to teach kids about resilience, that kids live in the moment and they don't really have these coping skills. And so in order to maintain their strong mental health and their ability to respond to the ups and downs of life, that's going to take input from us and as a school community and make sure that that we're on top of this. They talked about dangerousness, risk assessments, which I'm sure is something that our school is doing. We might not call it that, but just basically the idea that we're keeping an eye on our students directly, forming relationships with them, reaching out to them as needed, recognizing the the precursors that are common amongst kids who do violence, not only in the school setting, but also to themselves, or also damage property. These are all sort of different manifestations of the same the same stressors and the same things that are out there. So, and one of the big things that they said there, and one of the big takeaways that I had was the idea that hurt people, hurt people. So if we're talking about safety, you know, the first place to look, you know, it's very easy to, after something happens. And again, these are, I'm not necessarily just talking that, they weren't talking about just large-scale incidents, but any kind of sort of acting out, is that usually this is in response to either some sort of trauma or some sort of stressor that's going on. And again, that was touched on a little bit more in the in the other session that I went to. And then the third one that I went to that day, and then I'll take a break and let somebody else jump in, was about school boards and the open meetings law. It's called government in the sunshine. And the big takeaway from that was the need for individual board members to be deliberate, I'm reading this one because I wrote it down, need for individual board members to be deliberate in remaining within the open meetings law, that because of what the definition of a meeting is, what the definition of school business is, deliberations, they were very big on the idea that the public has a right to attend and listen to the deliberations and decisions that go into the making of public policy. So it's not just how do we vote at the meeting, but it's how did we get there? How did we decide that? What were we thinking and where we got to that point? So they defined a meeting, again, a lot of things that we've talked about already, but, you know, do you have a quorum? Are you discussing public business? And if yes, then you're having a meeting rather, wherever it might be occurring. And if you're not doing it publicly, if you're not noticing it, you're not inviting the public to watch, then you're not, then you're in violations of that open meetings law. Again, they went into certain specifics on different things about, you know, notice, how you notice a meeting, how you, you know, the requirement to take minutes, how you enter into executive session, recording it, a lot of these things that we are doing already on a regular basis. You know, the idea that they made a big point to say, you don't just say we're going to executive session for personnel matters, that you have to be more detailed. And I know that's something that we've really tried to incorporate in our in our meetings for the public. And that was the main thrust on that one. So that was, that was my first day. So somebody else wants to jump in and go next, and I'll take a break and collect myself for day two.
Let's see. The first day, they did have keynote speakers that day. It was called the Three Doctors. There were three African-American gentlemen from Newark that bonded together to support each other, and they rose up from the middle school and high school, and they each became a doctor and then became heavily invested in their communities. I guess they rose to, over the last couple of years, they were featured on an Oprah special. And it was very interesting. I think that's one of the recorded ones that maybe everybody wants. That was really interesting to watch. And I went on staff diversity to benefit students. And just like I said, a lot of times when I go through this stuff that they bring up, it's things that we are in the process of evolving, especially with the equity seminars. The Stop Brands working on it, it seems a lot more, you know, the key points. The walkaways were generally cultural awareness and diversity. And that's strictly all across the board, teachers, the models, what you're teaching and how you're teaching. Culture-responsive classrooms. It just builds on the same concept. And they talk about when you do the strategic plan, you definitely have to include an equity policy in there. And I think that's what's going on right now with the group. The next one I went to was the future of work. Are schools ready? I went to something similar to this last year, where they're trying to give, it's more than just offering BOCs. It's, you know, how does a school network tie to their community? I know BOCs regularly meets with local businesses to see what kind of talents and skills students need, and then they try to alter their plans. This is something where they were trying to get more information into the schools. But a lot of this was much more for the rural communities, who are relying on a certain business or a certain type of industry. So they're really tied to it, so they have to move, they have to evolve quicker, because it's like upstate, if you were in Rochester, you worked for Kodak. If Kodak died, they went everything. So they're trying to evolve things in advance. Then I went to collective bargaining. Déjà vu are evolving. And it went over a lot. It was a lot of interesting information. But, you know, with Victor, Brent, and the superintendent, a lot of this is stuff we're aware of, you know, the tribal agreements, you know, everything's going on, and they spun all their negotiations, as we're finding, into the virtual world. And it's making things a lot more complicated. Because a lot of times, tone or tenure, you really can't get it if you're not in the room with the person. Saying, just like what we were trying to do, you're trying to clean up a lot of those troublesome provisions that are tied. Like, I know we have a couple of really weird quirks that nobody else has. These are things that you really want to try to tie up in your negotiations to streamline it. And so it doesn't keep providing a hindrance down the road, that you're more and more like other school districts. You don't have this really weird. other school districts, you don't have this really weird quirk in you. Method of instruction, and as we found out also, a lot more of the remote and virtual stuff, that all has to be in the contract, as we found out after. The difference between last semester and this semester is because of the contracts and issues related to that, and you know what we can or can't do. Big differences on APR that we're finding, intellectual property problems, you know, if they put things up or you see in the background, there's a whole bunch of different problems and with Werpa. They got a little bit into the snow day thing that people that are playing around with, that snow days will cease to exist. And, you know, people were freaking out, but just got to say, if you have five snow days in your calendar, school's ending five days sooner. So it's not like anybody's losing stuff. It's just, you know, it's that magic settlement of, what was it, put a spoon under the pillow or something to make it snow? I forget what the kids used to do. More of the settlements that were coming out, everything short term because nobody wants to lock into anything because it's all about money. Offer a lot more non instructional stuff. And that as management, you still have a lot of really good rights that, you know, you don't want me to talk about, you know, class size, job security, a lot of things that we already have control of, who have to maintain control. These are things you don't want to give up and you want to lock in. Think that that was my day for Tuesday. Actually packed.
So I actually kind of jumbled it all up because I I stuck with an equity theme. Anything that had to do with teachers, students, schools and equity, I was jumping in on those. So I'm not sure if I, I'll just cover the first two that I have here. They might be by day, they may not be. But just some of the titles that of some of the ones I went to. Journey toward equity, the Austin story, reaching equity through practitioner belief systems, model for equity and opportunities and outcomes, promoting cultural awareness between segregated school districts. Diverse and equal student perspective, culturally responsive curriculum programs, and there there are more. So the theme was the same, but it was interesting to see how different the school districts that presented. You know, they, everyone has a unique story or, you know, a unique situation within their own district. So people were able to talk to that, and I felt I was able to pull different things out of each of those. So from like the Austin story, for example, they, it was, and actually all the districts that whoever spoke, it was, it was a multi-year plan. We're talking three to five years. So I know we have our, you know, our 2025 plan that we're our next district kind of global picture, but equity work also is a three to five year plan. So I think, you know, we definitely have things that we need to address very immediately in this district, and there are probably some quick, I don't want to say quick fixes, but quick things, like things we can put in place kind of sooner than later. But real intrinsic, authentic work that has long lasting change that benefits everybody in the district. And it takes time. And they were very, very, everyone who spoke was very honest in that journey. And some districts had a harder time than others, people not understanding what are these changes about, you know, what are you taking away from my kid or adding or not? And everybody was absolutely made made sure it was, they were very clear on no one was losing anything or nothing was lost. Everything we, they had stayed. It was just either enriched or more was added in ways that a budget allowed. And they talked about how they, you know, community buy in and how they went through all these different processes to 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 do that. And so let's see, what can I say a little more specifically? Oh, a couple, another thing would also, I was kind of happy to hear, you know, so we're using NYU. I forget the appropriate title or their title, the organization we're using, but, you know, it's new to us. We're starting this work out and I, you know, we're not sure anytime you you do something new with someone new, you're, there's always a level of just questioning to make sure you've made the right choice. And it was reassuring to me to hear how every district that spoke, and this is from upstate, you know, mid state, Long Island, there were districts from all over with all kinds of demographics, and they were like the success stories throughout the state. They all used and started with the NY group, literally doing what we're doing now. They're five to seven years ahead of us in their work, but they all did start with the NYU group. And it was the main purpose, what I got from them was it helped the districts do the study of and the analyzing piece, and then the work came later. So that was, I thought, a good thing to hear. And I am not going to read through it tonight, but I do have a list of, like, I just kept saying, wow, every time they were talking, like, all these great ideas of student engagement and and the types of clubs and the types of activities that they have that have become really successful. And so I'll share those, you know, again, not tonight, but another common theme was the students. So this was the other thing. So we, you know, we sit here and I know we're going to involve some students in different, the different work we do. But in these districts, it was a really consistent theme that the kids, the students were the center of it all. It wasn't just, you know, the adults, the administrators, the parents get together and do this committee work. The the students were actually really an integral part of driving the direction of the district and the conversation. And they encouraged through these different activities and and the student activities and student committees and student clubs drove a lot of the district work. And they encourage student leaders and how to develop the students to be leaders and guide the work. So I just, I found it so interesting. They talked a lot about how to get the community involved in the work, and the students were the driving force of that. So that was the most amazing part to me, that that theme ran through, again, all the districts throughout the state that presented. So it wasn't like it was a particular part of the state. So let's see. The equity policy, I think, I forgot who spoke, said that prior, but I'm not sure if we have a specific equity policy yet in place the way they did. So that might be something we need to just kind of look over again and see. And there was also talk about, I'm sorry, I'm kind of flipping through all these pages and wish I kind of put it all together at this point. They had a one, so this was Austin, I think, had a board policy and resolution. At each meeting, they had an equity portion of it where there was a student voice and that was able to contribute to a board to board meeting. So we have our student representative now currently, that might be another, maybe if we gave our student representatives, hey, could you touch on these few topics or perhaps bring with you someone from an organization within the school, you know, the high school or, you know, maybe any of the other schools as well. And that was another thing that was mentioned, how, so if the high school has an equity club, or if they have a very specific African American history club to and be, you know, enrich the curriculum that already was very full, then they felt strongly that, and they had success with every level, K-12 was able to do a club like that also. It was just tailored to the, you know, age appropriateness of the child, whatever the topic was, whatever the club was. So they really felt that it wasn't, it shouldn't just be you show up at the high school and now you're have all this exposure or all of this. You know, these these diverse clubs and things, like every, every grade can can do something with it. And all of that kind of reinforces and it had to do with, again, I'm sorry, I'm not as good as Scott and Eric in this because I'm, when it was all equity, it was all kind of pieced together for me, but that, oh, sure, I lost my thought. I don't know, okay, it'll come to me. I have a list of different that I can share with Dr. Banlow. There was a bunch of different, okay, another cool thing, every district that presented, everything costs money, we know this. And they all found money. So whether it was through grants or different support systems, there are organizations out there, and and I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars they found, you know, through different organizations within, from the Northeast and across the country. So because that was everybody's question, you know, how are you funding all this work? We can't afford anything. And so definitely there's money out there. And I I would personally like to make the case, I know, not maybe this year, because everything is, we're financially strapped, but at some point, so I know BOSIs can do write grants for us. But my thought on that is they're not invested in us specifically. They represent many districts. So we can reach out to them and say, hey, we need this thing, but 17 other districts need that same thing. And really, I think that it would be worth the money, a stipend or something, to have someone internal to be, that's their job. Because if we pay this much for a stipend or something, the return on that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's in my mind, from what I saw these other districts accomplish financially, it's, it was, it'd be worth it for me, for us.
If I could jump on that, I know the town of Southeast has a grant writer that they've been working with, that's working on stuff for them. I believe somebody local, that's what they do. You know, maybe we can reach out to the town, see if that's something we can partner with. And, you know, either get them to do something for us on the side, if nobody's involved, or like I said, have it be set up for when money is available, we have somebody that's knowledgeable in that field. But if that's something, you know, maybe somebody could approach the town and see if they still have that. I mean, with everything going on with COVID, I'm not sure if they're doing that, but, yeah, I mean, grant writing is incredible what's out there if you just know where to look for it.
Exactly, exactly. Yes, thank you, Scott. And that was, it was great to hear. But it just makes me feel like, wow, like there, it's like you said, Scott, there's money out there if you know where to look, and absolutely every district proved that in all these presentations. Okay, so I'll stop here while I kind of look through my notes again. And Eric, if you want to jump back in and continue.
Surely. And I, Sonja, just while you were speaking, one of the things that I love is that idea of getting the students involved. I mean, I would love to have, you know, figure out what the criteria is and then bring interested students to the board meeting and give them, you know, have the equity section of the thing and give the kids the opportunity amongst themselves to decide who who should come and speak. And I mean, I've been to a couple of different protests, not in Brewster, but in other places. And, you know, the kids often have very specific ideas about where they think they can start to even the playing field and start to start to have us provide them with the things that are lacking. So I think, I think that would be something great to, for us to be able to work on. So the next thing, I, again, it was another mental health thing. This one was presented though by attorneys as opposed to educators. So it was a little bit different, but they did bring up some, some interesting points. But then they kind of talked a little bit more about the legal responsibilities and other things that go along with mental health issues in the schools. So let's see, a couple of things that they pointed out that especially now with COVID, the combination of the disruptive routines for students, along with the financial stress and the and the problems at home that this this pandemic is is having on everybody. You know, it it's not just, it's not like it used to be where kids sort of have a steady routine, and even if it's not great at home, they at least can count on certain things. Everything is up in the air, young people having an incredibly difficult time in figuring this out and finding their way through it. And especially they they pointed out that lower income families, you know, people who are working paycheck to paycheck and who who potentially are, you know, maybe working either the gig economy or, you know, doing something else like that, the stress on those kids is is significant and it's pervasive and we're already starting to see those issues sort of take, take take root. So, and again, Dr. Vanlo, I'm sure we're doing many of these things already, but if there's anything in there that that's that that would be helpful. Obviously, when students are exhibiting signs of lacking mental health at school, we should make counselors and psychologists and social workers available. If necessary, do that risk threat assessment and then notify the parents. You know, they made it very clear that should the parents, you know, if the kid is exhibiting signs that he or she is a threat to themselves or others, and the parent is not taking an active role in this, that that's a CPS call at that point. And then obviously, once a medical provider has cleared a student to return to school, the student be allowed to return to school, they kind of made a note that, you know, sometimes it's difficult, especially if if there were some threats, there's always going to be sort of this idea that, oh, geez, is it safe to bring the kid back? But once, once that medical provider has cleared the kid to come back, it's, it's, it's difficult to keep them, to keep the kids out. Irregardless of what the, what the infraction was that maybe brought this to our attention. And then they also, not to be missed either, was they spent a lot of time talking about employee mental health. And of course, we've talked about many times how our employees have basically had to pivot on their profession and completely take on a new set of skills and new expectations. You know, the, the, the entire profession has basically changed almost overnight. And so that, of course, is going to lead to lead to stressors for them. If they start to see, if they start to have concerns about an employee's mental health, we can do a section, they mentioned a few things that we can do, such as a section 13 examination, determine, determine fitness for duty, medical leaves, potentially ADA accommodations, or even just a reassignment might either to home or to some other duties not involving students. And then a lot of the the conversation in that and the rest of that was sort of about how to facilitate some of those things. We've talked about the Family Medical Leave Act and what those what those requirements are and what those, what is, what the employees are entitled to under the FMLA. Obviously, again, we, you know, these things are extremely specific as far as what day do you start counting days and and other, you know, if if there's, if there's an underlying issue, if there's a family member, and then that potentially rolls into something else. So you can, you can sort of have, you know, a woman becomes pregnant and then, so the the birth of the baby is an issue, but then potentially if she has her own complications or is required to do certain things. So there's so many different things. Again, we would go back and speak to our own team and figure out how best to handle each individual situation. And talked, again, talked about the Americans with Disabilities Act and that mental health issues definitely fall under the ADA and the possibility for us to make reasonable accommodations under the ADA. So that one was insightful. The next meeting that I went to was Strategies for More Effective Board Meetings. And this was, this was really kind of a hand, not hands on, but sort of a, a real nuts and bolts of how to make our meetings potentially more welcoming, more effective. So a couple of different things, what they were looking for is you want a meeting that's welcoming, it's productive, and it fosters transparency and trust. So all three things that that we have definitely attempted to to increase, at least in my time on the board. So one of the things that they suggested, the first thing they suggested was using student ambassadors at the meetings. Basically, just a couple of greeters at the door, handing out agendas, assisting people. Obviously, this is not in a COVID world, but and the benefits they talked about was it gets more students involved in the meetings, which is always a good thing. And it sets the tone right from the outset that that we're here, A, for the kids, and potentially, you know, kind of diffuses a little bit of attention if people are coming to the board meetings and there's a real contentious issue, you know, being greeted by a, you know, a fourth grader handing you a program might sort of slow you down in your Might sort of slow you down in your tracks a little bit and make you rethink just how angry and um, how bad it's going to get in there. Talked about the need to maintain, to set a strong agenda and to stick to it. Uh, if something comes up that, that is not on the agenda, that doesn't mean we, we diverge from our agenda. We just realize that it needs to go on a future agenda. Again, I don't think that's anything that, anything um, anything new for us. Um, the public comment period they talked about. Potentially having a signup sheet, uh, setting a policy on it, again, something that we, we have definitely done. Uh, avoid engagement with members of the public, that this is really. An opportunity for us to listen and not get into a back and forth. Uh, but then communicate at a later date as far as what those, those issues were. And again, I know that we've, we've spent a lot of time uh doing that. And then some tips for uh ensuring that future meetings are effective. You want to thank your presenters, you want to make sure you touch back on unresolved agenda items. And um, and then potentially assign responsibility for follow-up. So things, they don't just get talked about at a meeting and then sort of forgotten and, and. And not acted on. And one of the, the last thing that they brought up that I thought was extremely interesting was. Um, a meeting observation sheet that's available to people in the public. Might be a survey that we attach to people who do a Zoom, but basically asking technical questions, you know, everything from, could you hear? Could you, you know, could, how is the connection to um, to, you know, do you feel that the board was addressing the issues? Do you, you know, much more, sort of an immediate feedback on the meeting itself, not necessarily the content of the meeting. Much more about how the meeting was run and if it was something that, um, that people thought was. You know, accomplish those goals of being transparent and being, being welcoming and efficient. Uh, and then the last one for the day for me was, I got a message from the school. Working uh toward a culture of excellence with the superintendent, sort of that board superintendent relationship. And. So obviously, uh, excellence is, the, the, one of the big points they made was excellence usually requires change. And while people always want change. But very few people want to lead change and very few people want to do the work that's required for change. Um, and so that becomes the struggle. And change that, that comes, one of the big points that they made in this, in this presentation was. When the change comes, it's not going to stay unless it's accompanied by a change in culture. And I'm, I'm obviously not talking about like, you know, procedural changes, but actual like, to really build change. We're talking about equity. We're talking about some of these big. Big picture topics. Um, and so they spent a lot of time talking about culture and the importance of culture. I think our culture is very strong. Uh, you know, you sort of, um, I, I've definitely gotten that feeling both as a board member and as a parent, that the culture has really changed. And obviously, that's, that's significantly based on the leadership in the, in the schools that we have now. Uh, but a couple of quotes that they threw out to me that I thought some of them were very interesting. Uh, structural change not supported by cultural change will always be overwhelmed by the culture. A great culture provides the context for people to deliver their best work. And uh, my favorite one, culture eats strategy for breakfast. So just a couple of thoughts about how important, you know, they sort of, the analogy was to a tree. Whereas the climate is sort of the branches and the leaves and the things that you see. But those things are easily, easily changed. And they, they do tend to go through sort of a metamorphosis, whereas the culture is the roots. Uh, you don't see it, uh, but you see the effect of it uh continuously. And, and nothing happens to a tree. Unless it goes through, uh, I shouldn't, I'll, I'll stop with the analogy. Uh, nothing happens in an organization unless the culture uh is, is changed. So uh, so very strong on um, on culture. And then the next, the next part that they put a lot of time into was sort of. Everyone knowing their role, what their role is, and we've talked about this before, sort of everybody knowing uh. Uh, what their, their responsibility is and making sure that they are aware of it and how to, how to execute their responsibilities. Um, building teams, you know, sort of the challenge of building a team, you want to include different thinkers. Um, but at the same time, you need everybody who's on the team to potentially be working for the team. So you need people to remain individuals with a team call in mind. So these are, these are the types of things that, that are needed in order for the board and the, and the superintendent to really. Have that healthy relationship and really drive change and drive positivity in the schools. Important of shared uh commitment to goals and outcomes. Uh, things that lead to that between the board and the superintendent are mutual respect, trust, effectiveness. Uh, and a con- a commitment to continuous improvement. And that was that one. Scott, you ready?
Oh, right. And if I could first pony off what Sonia and Eric were both discussing with the student involvement. I had saw something last year where, while we do have student representation, they're here to report the facts. Give us a rundown and, you know, what's going on at Pulse at the moment. Uh, there are a number of districts that actually have a student on the board. It's a non-voting role, if you don't get to go into executive, but they actually come to the meetings, they get to talk, they get input, they can ask questions. They do all that. So it, it's a bit higher than what we have at this time. I mean, they theoretically both could exist. But because it's a representative on the board, it actually, uh, we have to put it out to ballot. So I mean, there's a, a lot of work involved. I did get some sample policies from uh NISBA and the district that does it. Upstate, um, and maybe down the road if we want to, you know, have a discussion on it. I could forward the information and then see if it's something, you know, you would be interested. But like I said, it, it gets you. A different representation, it would be like an ad hoc at large member of, let's say, the Democratic Congress. So it's not your standard people that are all, I'm not going to say, the, the regular kids that are always doing, I think this could be a position that's created and approved through the district. And the high school, or we could bring in different types of student representation, you know, give them a six-month seat on the board so we can get. And these would not normally be the kids that would be as a part of the, the demo congress, the same ones that go through. This could give us some aspect, maybe into a different insight. But, you know, we'll leave that for something down the road. But as to Wednesday, uh, the first one I attended was a helping Central American students. And I know I had spoken to Dr. Kennedy a couple of times and she had pointed out uh what they were going through, because a lot of these um. Young people come up, um, newer our district and they suffer a lot of trauma. A much more trauma than you would expect of children at that age. These people really pointed it out. And um. It's to build, they call the trauma system interventions. Well, this is above and beyond ruler and, and score all these other uh programs we have, but it's something specifically tailored to these uh young students. Who are definitely experiencing more trauma than any of the students. And I found there was a lot of um. Their big thing was trying to develop cultural curiosity. And I think what we just did with the um. I guess our dual language learners, I think is what we're, we're calling these young people now. It's a lot more input, so I mean, it could tie directly to that. Then I tried uh remote learning best practices. Basically, everybody was just trying to come up with workflows and. When do you do professional learning and all that stuff? And it's just, everybody was exactly like us. So everybody. Looked like a deer in the headlights and it was constantly evolving, but everybody had new ideas. And I've seen from a lot of the stuff that people were coming up with. You know, our people had already put a lot of this together, but it was interesting just to see all these other options that people are going through. And then the last one for the day was uh understanding LGBTQ student needs. Uh, there's a gentleman on Long Island whose young son was, I guess, first he identified as gay and then he. Changed his um, his gender and, and his, and his pronouns. So it was a whole different story and it was new to the region. And as his son progressed, you know, he had developed this club for students on Long Island. Um, and they actually had the students zoom in. Some of them came in, that you could see them sitting in a hallway in a high school. So, you know, there's a kid crouching down in the corner, trying to get a little wifi. And he's basically, you know, laying his soul out on the table, telling you all these things that have gone through. But they've developed this incredible program on the island. And uh, this guy, for nothing, will come and talk to any school, any district, um, just to develop. And it's more of a, a talking and a, a setting up of a group. And I mean, they had done it the first time on Long Island, they ended up with fifty, sixty kids, you know, from various schools. And they've been trying to evolve it into a Zoom model. I wish he would let the kids, he was a wonderful man, but I guess. He has so much to say, the kids didn't get to say as much as they could. And you could see them in the background, trying to raise their hand and trying to. Throw a little input. He was just going on about this program, which was incredible. But I, you know, I, that I wish we could see a more involved student. But um, like I said, that's something that. I, I know we're doing stuff already, but I mean, it's an established policy and a setup and I found it very interesting. So that was, that was a very fast Wednesday.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Thank you everyone for uh, for suffering through this. Um, we're, we're trying to cover three days quickly. You know, there were, I don't even know how many, over forty, I think, presentations. Um, so. For me, let's see, um. Hold on, I highlighted some more things. Um, so I'll finish up real quick with some more stuff on the equity piece. And there were two other things I, I attended. So one of the other themes throughout, what, you know, everyone discussed, again, it was specific to each district for whatever their needs were. I would, I just pulled the common themes from each of them. Um, but what was really important was to make sure. The work you're doing is being informed by the people it affects the most. Um, so whether, you know, it's, you know, uh, people of color from different backgrounds. Um, you know, whatever, whatever ethnic or cultural background, um. You know, you have in your own, own school population, that you're making sure that they're part of the discussion to help inform the work. Um, there was a lot of talk and training that each district talked about with inherent bias and how they approached that work. One district spent two years just studying achievement gap with students. To be, to drill down very specifically with all the students. You know, why there were these gaps. And that, they spent two years on that. And they spent another five years. On, you know, equity work. And I mean, so it, it can be as, as drilled down as you need this to be. And let's see, hold on, um. Another interesting, so when the kid, the, the presentation where the kids were presenting, uh, so it was this topic, but from their perspective. They brought up situations of their own experiences. Um, so one was a girl, for example, who. Was, you know, very advanced student, but wasn't placing herself. In more advanced classes because she didn't feel, based on the culture of the school, um, and the teachers. So no one was being negative or dismissive or it was nothing that, it wasn't that, it was just the culture was, you know, another day. Kids sign up for whatever they want. Um, so she didn't feel comfortable signing up for certain things. Because she was a minority and didn't feel that, you know, she'd be supported. And she was lucky to have a teacher who asked, you know, why she didn't sign up for an engineering class. And because of that teacher's engagement, um, she ended up signing up for the engineering class and continuing on. And so there was discussion when, when the school district was figuring out these nuances, you know, how can they. Support teachers in recognizing students who have certain potentials in different areas. And how can you help support the student? But again, you know, it's, there was years of work with. Um, working with teachers and they strongly stressed, you need to give teachers time and space. And a lot of positive reinforcement on the work that they're doing and the growth they're doing, because it's a shift. This was um, a presentation on, on culture. So we just talked about that also. And um, let me look real quick. What it said, um. That was this one. Oh, it was culture, okay. Um. So it, it's, okay, so actually, they, they said they started with the board. And that the board had to interrogate their own thinking and decide, um, to discover where our own inherent bias was. And they did. Uh, retreats, they did podcasts, they shared videos, they did different exercises, they did their, a book study. Um, so they, that district felt very strongly that it starts with the board. Um, and then, you know, with the, with, and then it, not that it filters down, but if, if the leadership of the district has an understanding of it. It helps inform the work and where the district needs to go. And again, back to, you know, the students and involving them, like we've all talked about. Um, and how important it is for the, for the kids' involvement, because the kids. I know that, you know, as parents, we often look at our, our, our children as, um, well, they're still kids. But when we allow them to have a voice, it then also brings the parents into the conversation. Um, so, oh, another district came up with a profile of an, of an employee. So we have an employee, a profile of our student, I think, right now. And they additionally had a profile of an, of an employee. What kind of employee, you know, do we want? How do we want them to be as a well-rounded person that works here? And they also talked about how they did their diversity training and all that. And they got very clear, so they had a training video for their hiring committee, they did, um. They searched for their employees out of state also. And their thinking was that, you know, some of our own students leave the state, come back, want a job. And certifications, and I'm not sure how all that works, but they figured out ways to help support people from out of state. That could come here to teach and just have that more diverse of, of a background. And, okay, so, oh yeah, the other thing the students talked about was just the, the level of diverse. Um, electives and clubs and that, like I mentioned earlier, how it should be K-12. They also talked about, um, one of the students talked about sports. And they, they said, you know, if you have a kid that comes to math. And doesn't know math, whatever level they've been put in. You don't just say, okay, don't worry about it, you don't have to take math anymore. You actually find ways to bring that student up to speed or whatever. And so they said there are kids who, you know, for whatever reasons. Didn't engage in sports in kindergarten or elementary, the elementary gaze are coming in at, at, at higher levels. And a lot of kids are, don't have access to that. And they talked about ways to get kids. And the whole point of this, and from the kids' perspective. Was to keep kids engaged. So the, the students themselves were saying, you need to keep us engaged, you need to keep us out of trouble. By these very engaging clubs, these very engaging sports options. And if we're cut out of them because of access that other kids had, well, you know, then we're left out of a bigger conversation. And, you know, they do academically better because they have, they're engaged and they're present in school. And so come up with different ideas, whether perhaps it's, you know, just skills. Skills sessions that allow kids to then try out for a team because they were able to separately gain skills. Or maybe do uh co-curriculars. I know like CV Star, I think, did stuff in the morning or does stuff in the morning. But then it ends there. Um, we could come up with other solutions for kids to still be engaged in sports that isn't as competitive perhaps as some of our teams. So it's great to hear from the students themselves, talking about how we can keep them involved in school. And um, not just being preached to. Another big thing is there are so many organizations out there. Again, I won't go through them all tonight, uh, but between speakers and organizations that can come into the district and help. You know, provide insight and guidance to what we're doing. Okay, hold on, um. Internships, oh, the kids talked about, you know, getting them also involved with internships in the community, whether they're paid or unpaid. One district was having the kids who were thinking about, I don't know, maybe I'd be a teacher, or I'm not sure. They were letting them do a lesson plan within the, their own high school. So a high school kid doing something small, nothing major, yes, with their peers, or maybe going to a lower grade. I, I didn't get all the details on it. But if, if we within a school building can expose children to something they might want to do in their future, why not give them access to that? So they can make more informed decisions. So that when they go to college, because a lot of kids end up dropping out because what they thought they wanted, they didn't know. And this just helps kids stay more engaged in school. And. Oh, they also talked about um, cult for change, you know, culture shifts. Uh, and I, I think one of you guys also mentioned this, but. Uh, and I, I think one of you guys also mentioned this, but um, community cultural learning sessions. So bringing, you know, requests from the community to have people sit around the table that can share their own experiences and their own journey in life and you know, to help us become more as a connected as a community. And then that would help translate into the schools and community book studies as well. So let's see. Uh, parent involvement, they talked about, oh, newsletters. Newsletters to go out specific to equity work, you know, and we, we've talked about this already. We added it to our board meetings. But to have a very specific newsletter about equity and let's say our 2025 vision that's just on that. So people can keep track of what's going on with that work and um, I'm gonna just finish up the stuff that I had. Other thing was, uh, so I thought this was interesting. It had to do with school-based health center. It was actually a district in Northern Duchess that has approximately sixty percent of their student population economically. Was, I can't read my writing disadvantaged, I think I wrote here. And they decided that there were so many issues uh, when it came to health, student health, that it was affecting instruction. And again, another one who found money to help make this happen, that they actually have uh, medical and dental access on the school campus for all its students and it was funded um, through different, different means. They, I mean, they got I think almost $200,000 in money um, to make this happen. And for this particular district, because their need was so high, the return on investment was huge because the kids were now in school. They were being healthy. They were being educated in, in health and stuff and um, so for them, it was, it was just a very interesting topic on what that district did. And the other thing that I, I think I'll leave with, um. Let me just double check this. Had to do with, uh, can't find it exactly, but it had to do with questioning, I think Eric, you talked about mental health, I think actually both did, was because, because of that mental health piece with all our students and they are students, they're young, they're kids to consider mental health, not issues like, but perhaps issues over suspensions, right? So instead of just suspending a kid because they violated whatever code uh, or rule or whatever we have in place, to have more in-depth, meaningful um, exchanges with the students to find the root cause of what's causing the behavior. Because otherwise you end up with the same repetitive behavior perhaps or a host of other issues, not, you know, finishing school, not doing well in class. When really there's something underneath all that and, um, you know, with the initiative from the state a couple of years ago with all, we, we did hire a lot, I know, a lot of mental health um, people within our district. So, you know, there were districts talking about how they were addressing their mental health needs within their district and not just going right to like the suspensions or the detentions or whatever, we're always like the last resort after other means were, um, were met. So I'm gonna um, finish on that and I'll, I'll send that kind of a follow-up email with some more information to, to spare us a lengthier evening, but um, if Eric or Scott, you wanted to finish up with anything else from the conference?
Sure, I'll, I'll just go over a couple more things real quick. Just, just two more from me. The first one was on school data and privacy and I just wanted to say, uh, thank you because as a member of the policy committee, Dr. Gosh has been leading us through um, turning all of these new statutory requirements into policy as regards to student data. Teacher data, any sort of personally, personal identifiable information. So I was very encouraged to sit in and to sort of hear about sort of what's, what's required of us with the new laws and, and knowing that we, um, we've been working on this for some time. You know, the New York State Shield Law, uh, Ed Law 2D, so many different changes, so many different things that have have changed over the last few years. And now we are, we are, I believe we are well positioned for um, moving forward on that and that is very much the work of, of Dr. Gosh and everybody on that policy committee. So, uh, one of the big concerns that they had was shared services and sort of if, you know, if we have, you know, say a, a BOSI's arrangement or something else and then there is a breach, you know, the notification requirements and a lot of the hard work, the, the real drilling down into, um, into compliance. That's, that's sort of, you know, some people still question exactly where we stand on those things and what, and what the law requires, but um, obviously, you know, that's, that's work that's still in progress. Uh, and then my last one was, uh, was interesting. It was a mock thirty twenty A procedure, which didn't really get into like a back and forth on a specific case because they talked about so many different cases from around the state. And I can just say that, uh, some of the um, cases that they talked about were, um, were remarkable. That is remarkable that you didn't hear about it, even though it's not anywhere near us. Um, and I know, uh, you know, Dr. Banlow has been very, uh, worked very hard on employee relations and making sure that we're avoiding any of these cases. And one of the big reasons and what they talked about in this training was the fact that these things are so expensive. There is always the possibility when we go for, for teacher discipline that with such a high standard that we could be potentially spending a great deal of, of money and time and resources to get to a to get to a, a resolution that possibly doesn't necessarily even change what's gone on and, and what, what can happen. So just to go through real quick, a lot of it was based on the, the presentation of the case. Um, they cited a couple of different cases with very similar fact patterns, but the hearing officer basically commented and said, you know, based on the thoroughness of the case and how well it was presented, the, the district was able to secure termination as opposed to just a fine or just a suspension. They said that, uh, if, if there is a concern about an employee, that the two, the, the two things that you have to do, you have to prepare. This has to be a long-term thing. There's no knee-jerk, easy answer. Someone does something wrong. Even if the community knows about it, that doesn't necessarily mean you need to be prepared to move forward and need to have documented evidence of, of previous wrongdoing and malfeasance. Uh, part of that preparation that they talked about was the use of multiple evaluators. You don't want to just have one person doing all the evaluations and then they end up, you know, the, the question becomes, well, maybe that person was biased against the subject of the investigation. Documenting the teacher response, a lot of sort of nitty-gritty down, um, you know, making sure that you really sort of put your ducks in a row ahead of time. And then your teacher improvement plan, is it thorough? Is it, is, is, is every opportunity given to the employee to potentially improve their ability to be a teacher and to continue to, to rebuild the trust of, of the administrators and the community? Again, a, a lot of talk about social media, what can happen on social media. Do, and then I will, they, they talked about certain things like we talked about the idea of instead of going for a thirty twenty A, what different things that we can do, including counseling memos, medical evaluations, progressive disciplines, negotiated settlements, things like that. And then the last part of it, and that will be my last thing that I will say. What, hold on one second, I'll write at the end. That the, the, one of the last points they made was sort of this idea that sometimes you're, we're gonna have to the way that they said it was basically put a teacher in a position to fail. And I know these are, are difficult conversations and difficult thoughts to have, but you know, it's, it's, it's sometimes very difficult in the, in the current tenure environment to enact the, the discipline that we might want. And so we end up potentially with the possibility of a teacher in a classroom. While that process is going on, it is normal. It is, uh, it happens everywhere, even though obviously the students are not benefiting from it. The, the families of the students are concerned. The whole community might even be concerned depending on the, 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 the nature of, of what we're talking about, but because there is due, there are due process requirements on all of on all the employees and any sort of disciplinary proceedings that we might not potentially get, get the, the outcome that we want as soon as we want. And then what do you do in those situations? And, and, and these are the difficult conversations that, um, that we, you know, the difficult conversations that we have to have in the difficult situations that we have to navigate through. So that was it for me.
A little bit easier, um. Regardless of like, I know we just talked about, um, suspensions and stuff. I know Dr. Gosh had been doing a lot of work on restorative justice and some other things. I think they were trying to spin at the high school. So once again, she's got a, she's got a plan for it. Uh, let's see. It's some, um, the best candidate inclusive competency-based hiring. I know a lot of that is, you know, repeat of what I just said before, but I guess we were all trying to stick with our themes. And a lot of the items they mentioned, we had been working on at this time. And then I did have to get one money thing in there because I guess that's my thing. They had COVID nineteen school district budget and financial implications. And I could tell you, it was just as scary as the one that Victor. You know, they're talking about the plans and the historical and how do you budget out and most people are just staring at like, oh, okay. But it's, it's definitely a long-term thing. I mean, that across the board, everybody from a number of different groups are saying this is gonna be similar to the last bump. It's gonna draw out over a five-day year period until the state ramps back up. Hopefully, since it was such a cut, drastic cut in money coming in and, and I could, the economy, it can recover quicker, but it's still gonna be a prolonged period that they're looking at. So you really have to look out and keep the information out there and definitely as Victor always says, levy to the tax cap. I mean, that's what they were coming across, even if it's just a little bit. This is information. This is something that's gonna hold on to just a couple of teachers or a couple of programs. We all wanna cut where we can. God forbid, you know, there's a sh, school closure and then we have money, we can make it up like that, but otherwise we have to have the money that we need to run the districts. And when dealing with the community, you really have to compare yourselves to other districts and what's going on. A lot of times we do have the lowest tax rates, the lowest figures and stuff. If you look at the big numbers, it's scary, but when you do comparisons and you get the information out, you really show how, you know, prudent the district is being. And to try to keep the cuts, as we all know, furthest away from the classrooms until you don't have a choice. Like I said, it's eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent of your budgets. Salaries and benefits. So i, i, it's big, it's gonna get there eventually. And what I took, the biggest thing I took away from this was to be the best source of information. Get out in front of the rumors and misunderstand. Be the place where people go instead of just going online and about themselves and making up stuff and by the time it gets to us, you know, it's too late. You know, to really try to get out as much. And I think with the plans Victor has, I mean, it's really hopefully something we can do. We did systematic improvement through stakeholder engagement and partnerships. This was mo, much more tactical than I expected. I thought it was just gonna be like warm fuzz, you had to keep nice with the community, but it was, you know, context versus contractual, tactical challenge versus adaptive challenges. To be honest, I got lost a little bit through this, but I guess there's a lot of ways to try to build in and, you know, just building on what they do and how the stakeholders, you know, that's our audience. We really have to make sure what we do, what we can for them. Um, and we had the policy roundup and review. And a lot of it is things we already discussed, you know, data privacy, which Eric covered. Disclosure information, piles and piles of COVID nineteen stuff. I, I don't want to say that anymore. Educational equity, as we found out. And there are a number of policies out there, I guess, that are, that are in existence. Um, I wanted to say, one of the numbers I wrote down was zero, one, zero, five. Like I said, those are samples of equity policies that are in existence. So we probably get them through NISBA or West Shift to Fund them, that's equity inclusivity and diversity in education. And that policy regulations and exhibits, it's very thorough. And then they broke down everything from mission statements to learning objectives, um, library materials, recruiting and hiring, professional learning. All of them do have policies that are very specific to the equity piece. So I don't know if it's a separate piece that we have to do or we just roll it into our existing policy, but there's a lot of stuff that's available. Um, then with what we see coming up, there was a whole discussion on homeschool students and immunizations, I'm assuming. I guess I don't want to assume, we go down the road and the vaccines come out, that will be a policy and there will be discussions and there will be mandates. And that will be a very hot button topic as we've seen throughout the area. Even though just up until a couple of years ago, we still had measles and other immunization, but that was all religious based. So we'll have to see how that rolls out. Red flag law, sexual harassment, board member training, homeless children. I mean, it just went on and on. The stuff that they had available. It was too much. I think that was the round down of the day.
Thank you. Did you wanna share anything?
Yeah, well, first I wanted to say it's so refreshing to hear the topics and the workshops you went to because as you know, I've been dealing with just one topic. So if you have information that you want to make sure that I get, please either just send it electronically to Lauren or you can drop off a folder with the info because you gave a lot of great nuggets of information that we definitely could utilize as we move forward in so many different ways. So please share it and I really thank you. I know not everybody could attend because of work, you know, commitments, but I just want to thank you for, for attending and, and sharing the information first and foremost. And I just have to go back to what Scott said before. Yes, it's a spoon under the pillow, Scott, for snow days. And pajamas inside out for snow days. So that, that could be coming up. So the, the, the one, the one workshop I was able to stay with for two whole days before a lot of other things happened in the district that seemed to be taking all my time was the two-day um, school law seminar. And basically it was, you know, it was lessons learned from the COVID nineteen. And I wanted to listen because I wanted to make sure that we were on top of everything. I think we're getting great advice from our attorneys. I think that the board's been on top of things. Um, the district has, but, um, it was just reassuring to sit through the, the seminar to hear what was going on. They covered a lot of different topics in the two days. Um, I'll be, I'll just be very brief, I promise, but, um, you know, it was, they really highlighted the importance of collaboration with all stakeholders, collective bargaining groups, and we certainly have had that in the district. Making sure that we're, um, you know, you know, making sure everybody's a part of the decision-making. The thought exchange was something that we did with Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIs to get information from, from families. We're hoping in the future we can key into that and, and uh, there is a cost to that in the future, but it was an excellent, we had a lot of great reviews from parents. They felt that they were being heard and they can go back into it and um, add things throughout the process to make sure that their voices were being heard as we created the re-entry plan. So that, that was the main thing. And there was another one on school transportation services in the COVID nineteen pandemic and I, I, and I feel that you know, we really were on top of everything. So that was, uh, great. I saved a lot of PowerPoints because I was not able to jump into them because I was pulled away a lot, as I was again today. For um, several different COVID cases, but there are recordings and, you know, there was a couple of things and I'm glad that several of you mentioned it. The culture responsive curriculum programs is something that's really standing out. Um, I know I'm getting a lot of equity information from many of you. Um, my brother's keeper sounded really interesting, but I was not able to jump into it. So whatever information you guys have, I, I really appreciate it. Um, so we can make sure that you know, we're utilizing all this great nuggets of information. And I do think in the future, hopefully when things get back to normal, our district has a lot of great things that we can highlight. Like our career skills program that was just awarded, you know, that was, that could be something that we highlighted in NISBA. And that was something I was hoping we could do this year before everything happened. Also, we started a parent university. That's good, you know, that could be something that we talk about. And hopefully our equity. And I think the point that, I just wanna, one last thing, I think the point that Sonia made with our Brew Division twenty twenty-five and the equity, it, it, it has to live. It has to be a three to five-year plan, but not just a three to five-year plan. It's something that's gotta just continue to be a part of who we are and, and changing the culture. And, and Eric, your, your, your metaphors were great. Scott, lots of great details. Um, so, um, I think we have, we have a lot of good work to do and we have our work cut out for us. So, um, that, that's really all I really wanted to add right now, Sonia.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, thank you, everyone. So th- this is why we do work sessions, because I know I checked, no one, no one else is on here but us. I mean, it's being recorded. But um, you know, if we we do these updates at a regular board meeting, we lose everyone. So we have another thing to get through. And this is the uh survey that we sent out, actually the district sent out, and we were allowed to have a question on there. We all saw the um, uh if you all looked it up, the graph of the percentages of of who participated. Um and there were essentially six categories. It was broken down by uh K five, you know, hybrid, K five all remote. Then six eight and then Brewster High School. And it was suggestions, the community to provide suggestions to aid in our ability to address the needs of the school community or other comments. Essentially was our question. And um, so I just want to start us off, since we are being recorded. For anyone who comes back and watches this. That there were quite a few positive comments and uh words of encouragement and support. From the community in the work that's being done currently in the district by the board and the administration and the teachers. Um I do want to start with that. I do want to state that. And um, yeah, so I I I wrote, I took a lot of notes. And I will, I'm not going to look at them as uh negative comments. I'll look at them as uh points of area. You know, people have concern or questions um or areas we can improve on. And the other thing I just want to say is some of these things, just because of the timing of when the survey went out and where we are today. I'm thinking some of these issues might have been resolved. I don't know. Like, I'll just, for example, cover the fact that there were quite a few comments about technology. And um whether it was a teacher's camera or a student losing their wifi because of power outages and, you know. Making, how do they get credit for things when they, you know, make up work, when there's just technical difficulties and how, who can they reach out to? And I mean, I I I think we've uh informed the community better at this point, you know, in terms of, you know. The cell, is it self, the help desk at Brewster or uh Brewster schools dot org, right? Anybody can reach out to that email. Or even just kids, I know we're emailing teachers and just saying I'm having issues. I think we've done better um in informing that. But that, just to say that I think some of these things might have been addressed just since the survey even went out. And um I don't know how much of the comments that we got also overlapped, Dr. Bandlow, with the responses you got. Cause we didn't review that. That was, that was your part of the survey. So if we do happen to bring up things that you guys have addressed or already, you know, are aware of. You know, please let us know.
Yeah, that those definitely were addressed and those are, you know, constant. Yeah, but yes.
Okay, um, so I thought we could, let's just maybe first do like the K twelve hybrid. And there were some specific things that, you know, were kind of K five versus K eight versus high school. Um let's just kind of, we'll focus the hybrid first, then we can do the remote. There was, there were less comments related to the all remote students. So maybe we can get through the hybrid first. So the K five hybrid. So like I said, I always have lists. You can count on me for list. Does anybody have anything that that stood uh stood out for them regarding? K five hybrid that you want to just mention that you pulled out of there in terms of um whatever? And and I'll finish off with whatever I had. Anyone? Anyone wants to jump in there?
I have one, um, which is whatever I, I'm the first page, which I think was also a comment under another column. Um but basically an idea about some sort of protocol going out to parents about. And 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 I'm sure it has gone out in in different ways or parts. And and I think the um the pieces move so much that it, you know, one protocol, one week, maybe out the door the next week. But they basically talked about like something that says to your, to the parents, if your child gets sick, you need to do this. You know, or if you're, you know, diagnosed with COVID, you need to call here and do this. You need to call the school. Who you need to call, what needs to be done. You know, that was something that I saw a couple of times in the comments. Um just sort of some sort of guideline or flow chart or something like that to help parents understand. What it is they're supposed to do in certain cer- certain circumstances.
So we did add something, Carrie, to um, Dr. Kennedy and I did add something to the website under family. You should, if you pull that. You pull it down, there is something on COVID. Um we added contact numbers, but take a look that we could probably, you know. Pull it out even more and make more of a um a schematic, but we, you know, that was something that we did add, but it could be refined even further.
Thank you. Anyone else pull out anything from the K five hybrid portion? No, I can, I'll jump in there. Um, so I guess I can, across the board. A lot at the lower level, the elementary level, a lot more. It was mentioned in all all the grades, but mostly for the elementary. Was um wanting the kids back in school five days. I mean, that was repeated over and over again. So I mean, I want at least, this is being recorded. I want the community to know. We we read that, we heard that, we understand that. We'd love that. And um, you know, we're, we're doing our best to get there and we just got to work within the guidelines that we're kind of forced to work within. So there was something that also came up a couple of times in each, with each category. Was for the board to be more vocal in the community or to communicate more. And I know like they leave it to us to figure out, but I I do wish, so maybe we could for a a future survey. Specifically say, please provide a suggestion or a solution that you have. Because, you know, we we from our perspective, think that we genuinely are communicating. More than we've ever communicated before, but people are still asking for that. There was a comment by one person, but that, you know, we should communicate more with the students as the board. So maybe we could think about that and talk about that in terms of what what could have, what can we as a board communicate to the students of the district? That'd be meaningful. You know, I know our work is so, you know, um at this governance level. So I I'm not sure always what we can say to the students, but maybe we could think about that as something to to co- address. There was, I should say, that uh very specifically, someone did recognize the JFK leadership and staff. For how they were, you know, doing great. Um but across the board, everyone got that compliment. You know, things we can expect. People commented on struggles with working parents and that they were facing. And some, this one did have some suggestions. I don't know if it's a possibility for, we had before and after school stuff. And I know right now we don't, but that was a request that was s- said a couple of times. Could there be some safe way to do um before school, after school for for, to help parents out in this time? Um and it might be possible because with the lower grades, we use one building, but perhaps we could make it for all students or something. In and use, make use of all the buildings. So I don't know, but that was thrown out there. There were a couple of comments about I E Ps and and five oh four students needs not being met or addressed appropriately. Um in both scenarios. And I I know that we've addressed some of this. I think we brought some kids back and stuff. So I think we've addressed some of those issues. Some hybrid made the comment that they felt there was more structure in the remote learning. And I don't know, and unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the K five. And so that was another suggestion made by some parents that we, the board should. We should zoom in to some of these classes to see what's going on or whatever, to have a better understanding. But that was a comment. Let me just see what else I have. This was the category that had the most comments as well, was the K five hybrid. They wanted more syn- uh syn- synch- I can't speak anymore, synchronous work. Is that how you say?
Synchronous, synchronous or asynchronous?
I need glasses. Synchronous work, thank you, for um advanced students. Because, you know, there's a lot of focus, of course, in this hybrid world we're living in. We absolutely have to, you know, work with students who have more needs. But um there was some sentiment that children who perhaps are more advanced are also struggling for very different reasons. And maybe something could be done about giving them extra meaningful work. Some issues across the board with being marked absent, but actually kids were present. And I think it had to do with how teachers take attendance and when the kids show up because of maybe technical issues.
Sonia, while while you're looking to, I just want to mention that Dr. Gosh has a committee of teachers from every, you know, grade level. That she, she's looking at the survey results that we got, which are very similar to what you're, a lot of the things that you're reading. So that that, you know, they've, they've addressed many of those things and they're also um revamping a lot of the schedules too. So you'll see some changes if not already.
Thank you. Um. Well, there's a question about when kids are remote and about how effective that homeroom time was being. And I'm not sure how it looks in K five. But it seemed like there was some, some felt it was great and others felt it wasn't as useful. So maybe some inconsistencies in how that's actually being utilized. Comments on the cameras should be required to be on all the time. And they felt that um the in-school portion of instruction was not the same. As the remote portion. And I'm, this, again, this came all up under the category of K five remote, I mean, hybrid, I apologize. I'm not sure. It may be that some parents put the information there, but maybe they were trying to apply it to another building. So I'm just reading off what came in there. And. There, this was mentioned twice, uh because we're so hyper vigilant about COVID. That not every symptom is COVID, but yet our nurses are calling parents. They felt maybe unnecessarily because maybe it's really just a stomach ache or a kid just trying to get out of school and, and you know. But they weren't sure, so it's all just take your kid home. It might be COVID. So I'm not sure as we go forward if we can help both parents and in school. You know, differentiate between, there's other symptoms kids are going to have with other things. So I don't know how to manage that, but an issue.
Sonia, if I can also just um point out that even when like the children are are suffering from anxiety, that is also one of the symptoms that they can present. So that is a good distinguish. Is it something related like to COVID or is this something now related towards their mental health that needs to be looked at even more?
And I just, I just also want to just throw in that our nurses have been, had a lot of in servicing with um. Not only our medical director and the Department of Health, but that 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 was a topic that was highly discussed, just so you guys are aware. Making sure, because we're all worried about that. Every symptom could be COVID. It's not. So I think we're getting better. Um, our nurses are doing an incredible job, but I think as we all learn more about it, people are getting better. So I'm hoping it's better.
Thank you. Um, okay, so moving on to six eight hybrid. Anyone have?
I just have one more thing. It may be, it may be under six eight hybrid too, but I did see it under the um K five. Um, one was the idea that um one cohort is in school more often than the other one. And it seems as if cohort A gets more of the Wednesdays. I remember that we went over this in a meeting. Um, it's been worked out so that it's even, although it may not be even every month. Like I think at the end of the year, June, I think cohort A's in every Wednesday or something. It's even. It's just, it's not, every month is not the same. Um, so that was one thing that I saw that I could understand why people may think that because it doesn't go, it's not always every other. But I know that that's been addressed. There was one more thing that I s- saw about people um. Addressing, you know, internet and not having internet access for students. Um, I mean, I recall hotspots being offered, so that should not be a problem. We do offer all that, so if anyone is having a problem with that, they should definitely reach out right away to Jim Trelor and his team. Because everyone, we do have that for everyone. So. Um, you know, and hopefully that was something from earlier in the year that has obviously been addressed by now.
Yep, thank you, Carrie. Absolutely.
Um, anyone else for six eight hybrid? Things that you picked up? All right, I'll I'll go through what I, what I have.
I I did have one. Do you want to go first or I confirm? Well, and I don't know if it's, I think it was in both the six eight and the high school hybrid. But um, you know, we got a, we got a few comments about making sure that we continue to promote. The expectation of academic excellence in all of the schools. Um, just because we're learning remotely or virtually or however the kids are doing it. Um, you know, the comment was, we have to maintain our standards and and. And maintain the expectations that we have for the kids. You know, also considering the the mental impact that this all has on them. But, you know, this is, COVID is not going to be the 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 last thing in these kids' lives. They need to, you know, we need to still maintain how you overcome this and we're going to move forward. And still, you know, achieve all the things that should, they should and could achieve under normal circumstances. Um, so that was, I saw that a couple of times, so I just wanted to point that one out.
Yep, I think that's an excellent point.
Yep. Hold on, I'm looking at the uh. So it, uh, clubs are mentioned. Cultural diversity was mentioned. Progress of the kids. And communication, not just at the elementary level. So I think they're talking about like, so when it, the kids are younger, there's a lot of parent teacher time. And um, I think probably because more, because it was high, uh, it was Zoom. More parents tried to sign up for time to connect with teachers and there weren't enough slots to do so. And normally when we're in person, I think kids are probably handling school differently better, you know, whatever it is. Um, but in this time, I think parents probably more so wanted to check in with teachers and just, you know. From their, find out from a teacher's perspective how they felt their child was doing. And um, you know, I'm not sure if we can maybe rectify that with the next round. For the six twelve students to make sure that there's more time slots available or at least for every parent should they want it. Because um, um definitely, you know, I I think part of it too is because parents are playing teacher at home or at least support staff. And if there are ways that parents can help the teachers. Um, you know, if parents are working and they don't know and the kids are not in class. Um, it gives an opportunity for a teacher to tell a parent, you know, so that they actually know what's going on. I think we're just, we're in a unique time right now where we, we, I thought that was a good comment that um, to help create more access for that.
I think it's also easier for parents to attend a parent teacher conference now that they're offered by Zoom. Or, you know, as opposed to having to be at the middle school at two ten on a Wednesday, you know. So I think all of those different circumstances led to more people wanting to have these conferences than normally are held at the middle and high school level.
Yeah, it's it's very, very.
Yep, so I think it's a.
There was also um, a comment about, you know, I I can't even imagine. Being a teacher administrator in this time right now. And just how much work there is on top of work. And, you know, obviously when parents email, teachers may reply more so. But there was some comment about students emailing teachers and the student not hearing back from the teacher. Maybe soon and a half, soon, soon enough for an assignment to to get done or or to get the help that they need. Because the teacher has like the, maybe the office hours, but they needed help before that time could come around. You know, it it wasn't, it was just a couple mentions of it. So I'm sure teachers are doing their best. But that the students also need that additional connecting time. So in this section, we got a few other comments that had to do with, you know, I'm not sure. I guess they thought this was a place to say, but just in our residency policy and our registration or however we do it, but that renters, someone had a concern with, you know, I, I guess they, they consistently lived at whatever particular address for years. They continually prove it every time they're asked, probably just a little frustration in having to prove it every single time, even though it's been years and years. And I mean, I don't know what the answer to that would be because, you know, all renters, it's, it's its own scenario. And I think that they're unfortunately just in that boat. But maybe there is some solution, but that was brought up.
And if there's an individual person that brought that up, we, we don't know, but they could certainly reach out to, to Donna Maury at the board office or Andy Alvarez and we'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
If they're listening, I don't think.
If they tune in later. More opportunity for the community to share in small group settings. So people did comment and were thankful for the opportunity to, to comment in these surveys. They appreciated that. But there was one comment, how can people get involved in small committee work? To share. So I'm not sure what that was about. It was more specific than that, but you know, maybe when we talked earlier with our NISBA recaps and in terms of community work and having small groups just to share about anything, I mean, maybe we could just create some groups with each school. You know, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, we have some sub collaboratives for equity. So whoever, you know, maybe that person might want to get involved. And as we move forward with the vision 2025 too, we're going to have a lot of opportunities for people to get involved. So hopefully they will.
Yeah. So we could just send out reminders and. One concern about mask breaks in school, because we did, I think we did originally put that out there that there would be opportunity for mask breaks. I'm not sure how that's working out in the schools, but it was commented here that their child was asked for a mask break and wasn't allowed one. So I don't know the rules around that in the school buildings specifically. But maybe we, there's something we can incorporate with that if a kid is just having a moment that they need a break from it. Because, you know, we can spin things in our head also. We might just need a timeout. So maybe we can recognize that need with, with our students.
Yeah, we definitely have mass brace breaks for the kids, but if there's someone in particular that this, if that happened with an individual child, I would want that person to call the teacher and let the teacher know, you know, and just if there's nothing happening, of course, the vice principal. But we need to know if that's happening and make sure we address it.
Better comment. The issue about the public being able to address the board or just have those small committee meetings. I know this would be a lot more work for the board and require a lot more, I guess, time. But when I was in the Bronx, when I was an assistant DA in the Bronx, I was assigned to the 49th precinct. And we had these precinct councils for each precinct. And each month, every precinct would have a meeting with the community and the community was able to come in and just address the, the CEO of that precinct and talk about any issues that were, what was going on in the precinct. And it was just an opportunity for dialogue between the, the CEO and XO of that precinct and community leaders and members and anybody could attend. So I don't know if that's what, you know, this community member is talking about, just opportunity to address the board. But again, I know with everything that, you know, the board is doing and Dr. Banlow and that just may be, you know, too much, but I just thought I'd throw that out.
No, it's actually a good idea. I mean, over the summer, right? Was, it was in the summer we did our open forum. And at that time, we, we definitely felt we needed to have an opportunity for the community to come share about whatever. And, you know, we're in these remote Zoom times, but we actually, we managed it quite well back then. Maybe it's something, you know, had we been back full time, I think that would have been good to implement it. But maybe we could come up with a way to just have an open forum. Maybe it's, you know, once quarterly, like we just, you know, have a quarterly open forum for whatever. I think that would be something we could.
We had, we had planned for the, you know, the coffee with Eric, where we, you know, we tried to think about setting up at local coffee shops. And then of course, all this hit. And, but yeah, because it was great because then Eric would also pick the tab for your coffee. So it was wonderful thing. You get. It was great. Thank you, Eric, for volunteering for that every Saturday for the rest of your life. Thank you.
Eric, Eric, do you still do the coffee with with police officer in Pleasantville?
Yes, yes, we, we've done that. So.
John Nonna told me about that last couple of weeks.
Oh, see, so perfect. Eric, you have all the experience we need.
I, I do. I make a mean cappuccino. Absolutely.
Okay, good. Cameras on mandatory, I guess, parents requesting that the kids don't have the option to turn off their cameras. And I think that's kind of the gist of what I had. A letter to the community.
Yeah, I was going to just bring that one up.
Go ahead.
About, about, right, it was a request for a letter from the board, which I don't think is a bad idea right now to, you know, voice the concern that people need to keep their guard up still and follow the mandates to help keep our kids going to school.
Yeah.
So, you know, that covers so many other things that we're seeing outside of school, right? We're not seeing our increases because of the kids in the school building. We're seeing it because of what they're doing outside. So just hearing even from my eighth grader, things that are happening. I don't think it's a bad thing to come from us as a group of parents and the Board of Ed to, to voice that opinion.
Okay, yeah, good. We can, we could put that together and get it out quickly.
I, I would, I would just say, the only thing about that is I, I feel like that message is out already. It feels a little bit like we're straying a little bit from our lane for that. I feel, I feel more comfortable if we say, if we continue to say, we all know we need to, you know, like, this is what's coming. Like, I think Dr. Banlow has been very clear about, you know, we're, we're creeping up on that yellow designation. If that happens, the testing is not, we're not going to be able to test back in. So, I mean, I think we all know what's coming. I'm not, I, I, obviously the message is the message. The message is everybody should be wearing a mask. That's, that goes without saying. I think we could, I, I honestly don't even know how many people are against that message necessarily anymore. I, I don't feel like there's as much pushback on mask wearing as there was, say, two months ago. I think now it's much more just either, either we got lulled in with a sense of complacency with the good numbers that we had for a couple of months or the holidays or fatigue from having to social distance. You know, you know, the CDC just came out and said that the schools are the safest place for kids to be. So I'm not, I'm not against the message necessarily. I just, I don't know if it, if it, if it, if I'm in love with us being the messengers on that.
Well, what if we, you know, Dr. Banlow sends out updates quite frequent, frequently? What if one of them is, you know, just signed from the board as well? You know, we, the district and the board together, we're, so that's not another thing someone has to read. It's information they need to get already. We need to share it because we have to share it. But that, we're at least by, by including us in this kind of signature, it's just showing our support in what's, what the district is doing.
I, I, I feel like if, if we sign something, it should, it should be because it's from us. You know what I mean? And I, I feel like the, the information that we've gotten from the district so far has been far more factual than it has been. Again, it's, I don't want to make it sound like it's an opinion. It's not an opinion. Mask wearing is what is going to slow this down. I totally get that. It's just, you know, I, I feel comfortable when the school says, if the numbers continue to rise, this is what's going to happen. I even feel comfortable when the school says, when the professionals say, it's obvious that this is what's keeping from, keep, keeping, what will stop the numbers from rising is mask wearing and social distancing. And I'm not phenomenally against the idea. I'm just sort of more voicing a concern that.
Avoid. Okay. So you want just, if anything, if it was a letter to be just from the board and what if we avoided all of that? And instead it's just, you know, enjoy the long holiday weekend with your family. And, you know, thank you for everything you all continue to do to help us be, you know, whatever, do, I don't know, carry our best to be in school.
You know, more of like a positive spin, more of a positive, not, you know, message and just kind of add some things.
Do you not want to send anything, Eric?
No, 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 I'm, I'm not saying I don't want to say anything. I just, I, I, I feel like that message is, is so out there that sometimes, and, and, and we're sending so many correspondences and communications. I, I'm not completely against it. If everybody says we want to do it, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say no to it.
Well, that was one of the complaints in, in the, all these comments was that how can we consolidate all these emails and texts because people are missing important information? Because they think they read something, but two more came out and they thought they read it, but they missed it. So to your point, another letter isn't going to help unless we have value.
Are people going to change their behavior because the board sent an email out telling them? As opposed to the superintendent who is in the mix on, you know, boots on the ground day to day? That is not, you know, what we do. So I don't know. I, again, I'm not against it either. And I'm completely for the, 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 I think the intent of the comment, which is for us to, you know, stay involved and be involved with, you know, community notices and stuff. But I think that message has been sent 10 different ways.
So what would be the problem with signing our name to one of the letters that Lori sends out that happens to be positive and thankful and? Would anyone?
Yeah, I mean, if as a board, I mean, we have other things we can do. I mean, I don't know if it's a bit militant. But I'd much rather talk about, well, if there's families out there or kids out there are willingly violating the code of conduct and having parties and doing things. And they're the ones causing the school break, I'd rather have a policy in place that says these kids are a hundred percent mandatory distance learning for the rest of the school year. That also means your brothers, your sisters, anybody in your family, that's got teeth. You know, and that's, that's a fight. That's, I'd, instead of just putting something out that's nice, happy Thanksgiving, wear your mask, and it would just be people, yeah, yeah, yeah. We put out a policy that says, well, if we catch you and the police report these things and it's proven, your wonderful little child now is a hundred percent for the whole year. You deal with him at home. You take care and now you have to change your work schedule. That's teeth. That's, that's throwing a glove in someone's face, you know? I have a second, I have another senior now. So I'm, the same thing that happened to my senior last year is most likely going to happen to him this year. So I got two seniors, basically, I'll be blunt, getting screwed by people that shouldn't do, doing what they're doing. That's where I'd rather put my effort, going after that and having teeth in place that we're able to do something about it instead of setting a nice letter, please do what you're supposed to do. The people that will, will, the people that won't, won't. But if we have a policy that can punish, now we're talking something. It's not like yelling at your kid, do it because I told you so. Or do it because you don't get to watch TV. I mean, maybe it's a little militant, but that's the way I'm feeling.
I don't know how, how to be able to identify where, I mean, one of the problems with COVID is that you don't know where you get it from. So even if a kid is at a party and then tests positive for COVID, we don't know he got the, he or she got COVID at the party. And that's, you know, you, you said militant and it is a little bit, not to mention the fact how we would possibly, you know.
I mean, I, which district? Westchester did, did, uh, does anyone remember? They, the whole, they had a party, the kids, all the kids were at the party were like.
It was Foxland or somewhere.
Bedford School District?
Yeah. On graduation, they had a, they have a, they have a longstanding tradition where the, one of the nights around graduation, everybody goes, people come from all around town and it turned into a, a number of people, they traced it back to that event. But then the question, listen, anytime you want to do any kind of enforcement, the question is, is it practical? And, and, and is it, does it reflect what you're doing? If you get, if 50 kids go to a party and you only get three of them, what do you, what do you do? You know, like, like, do we just catch the ones who, who, who get the, who we know turn test positive? I mean, I think there's a whole, Scott, I totally hear what you're saying. The fact that people are just continuing, you know, it's one thing if for a couple of weeks, but I mean, literally over the last couple of weeks, these numbers are doubling and doubling and doubling again. And for people to continually.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah, for people to just continually allow everybody and everybody to act like this is okay. And this is, and not to take any precautions is completely unsafe and completely irresponsible. I don't know how we enforce our way out of that though, especially as, as a, as a school district. I think that's, that's fraud.
There might be no way to enforce it, but like I said, maybe just having the conversation is enough to scare the, the soft ones. And if it keeps one kid out, it's like everything you do with, with our kids and our students, if you reach one, you're successful. And if I save one kid, if you take one kid, if you have one kid getting AP, you've helped that one kid, that one family. But otherwise, I mean.
Well, do you guys want to continue this conversation at the December board meeting? We could just have the discussion as just a discussion, like you said, just to bring it up again and, and see.
I mean, I, I, I think it's a viable conversation, not just in the context of sending out a letter and do we send our, send our names to, but sort of what, what is our role as a board in, in trying times? I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to leadership. I'm not opposed to taking an unpopular stance or anything about, about that. But I also think that, that every action we take should be measured and should be considerate of what do we expect the legitimate impacts of it are going to be? And, and is it, is it, is it where we should be, should be going? I mean, this, this message, here's the thing, when you have the governor and the president-elect telling people, put your masks on and social distance, like Carrie said, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't clearly see the downside to doing it, but I also don't clearly see the benefit of doing it. And so again, it's, it's not something I'm, I would say I'm necessarily against. I'm just sort of, I have concerns. But I think at a, at a board meeting is a perfect place to have this conversation in public.
Okay, so let's do that for December. So that, high school hybrid, that was all I had for six, eight. Anything else for high school hybrid? I had a bunch of notes on that one.
I, I just had, I think it's in that category. Yeah, six, eight hybrid. Someone just asked a question about like the, the clubs at Wells and, 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 you know, some of them aren't returning. Why? How is that decided? And, you know, that noting that we had approved extracurriculars. And, you know, I think what was explained at board meetings was that every effort was made to bring back clubs that can perform, you know, whatever that is their club does in a virtual setting. And that doesn't lend, not every club lends itself to that. So I think to the extent any clubs were not continued, it was because of, of that. Not necessarily that we didn't have an advisor or that we didn't, we weren't willing to fund it or anything like that. It really was just, can we do it? What will you do? You know, and how will the kids do it? So that was the thought process. I think, at least, I think that I have that right.
That's correct.
That was one comment that I saw there. And then, yeah, okay. And then there was another comment just about making sure that our teachers are supported. You know, like, there's probably endless ways that our teachers need support. You know, one of them, they're one way, one thing they need support in is what they're going to be doing tomorrow, having some time to, to plan. You know, with all the different changes that they've had to deal with. So that is definitely something, I know, Dr. Banlow, you and Dr. Gosh have talked about. You know, the teachers obviously need to be supported in every way possible because if they're not, you know, working at, at their best, then nobody is.
Absolutely. And if we want them to do a lot of these changes, they need that professional development time.
Anyone else have anything from the high school hybrid? Category? I can jump in there.
Just really quick, Sonya, it was just one comment, I guess, going back to the other comment about access to the board. Yeah, she, she's just, she was just, I don't know, but the person just basically said that, you know, there was. You know, there was, she talked about, he talked about the, no, there was no communication with the student body whatsoever. I think we, we talked about that earlier. Um, how can the, the, the board communicate with student body? And then they, um, the person talked about, um, communication with the parents is also very poor. I'm not sure where they're getting that from with, you know, with all the emails and texts. That goes out to parents. Um, but again, it could be that, um, maybe this, this parent has a hard time checking, um, their communications. Um, throughout the day, you know, due to work or something like that. And then when they finally do check it, it's one text and maybe. The, the more important, uh, information was in a prior, you know, previous test, cause as we all know, you know, things change quickly throughout the day and, and we get multiple, uh, communications. So I, I, I think basically this brought up just access to the board and is just might go back to, um. I mean, that person may have issues with, again, with receiving communications throughout the day and, and then maybe again, it goes back to, um, have some sort of quarterly, um, meeting that, um, the person can, you know, can, can have access to the board. That's it.
And one other thing that was said in that was that, you know, there's no access to the board. Um, so I think that we've, um, done a good job at the meetings and otherwise. Um, you know, sort of advertising our, um, email address as, as much as we can. There, there is always access to the board. Um, but as we've, you know, discussed before, when you're talking about s- child-specific issues. Those should be raised, you know, either with the teacher, with the principal, you know, in the order of, um, of, you know, the, the issue with the child because the school board would not be involved on a child-specific issue. So certainly we, we, we do have, all parents have a method of communicating with us, which is our email address. Um, and, you know, just that, you know, child-specific or teacher-specific or principal-specific issues should of course be handled at that level, simply because we, that's not our role. We do not get involved in, in, you know, that kind of, uh, day-to-day situation. Um, and that, you know, that goes along with sort of these, you know, there was a reference to parent-teacher conferences and not having notices. Though, those notices come from the school level. And that would be where, if you don't feel like you're getting notice of them or sufficient notice, then you should go to that school's principal to bring that up. Um, so there are definitely, you can reach anybody that you need to reach. Um, and if you reach the wrong person, then, then they'll tell you, you know, who you should go to. Um, but certainly you can always reach the board at our, at our email.
Uh, I, I think that also goes, Carrie, to, um, what you just said in terms of, it, it shows a little bit of lack of knowledge on this parent's part in terms of, like you said, the role of, of the board. Um, but I think also the, the pamphlet, I think that we, um, that we're gonna put out, I think that's gonna provide a lot of information and to the community in terms of what the, the role of the board is. I think that would help as well.
And I just want to add, in, during normal times last year, the board, you know, it was great, the board, not only did they have coffee with Eric, but they had. Brewster Day where you guys were all out there, you know, with, with information about the district where people could, you know, talk to you about the district. And I thought, you know, in, in normal times, you know, you, you did make yourselves available. So that's something that, you know, I know you'll continue.
Just real quick, I, I had, I think I brought it up a few meetings ago, but in terms of the board's communication with the students. Um, I just thought of this, just, um, with respect to the high school kids. Um, if in fact the board wanted to communicate with students. Um, is it, um, a good idea that maybe the board could maybe put something in the high school's newspaper? Just bring that up again. But I know the paper is for the students, but it could be a mode of communication. For the board to, to reach high school students. I don't know if there's a paper in Wells and of course going down to, um, uh, C V Star and, and JFK, I don't think there is a paper, but at least that could, you know.
I think if every, every grade or building had a section in the school paper, I think that would be great. Actually, if you said that as a separate point. Um, maybe we could do like a letter, letter to the editor.
Yeah, I mean, you could put it in bare facts and I think it's not like C V Star had a newsletter, like that could be something. That, that's a great idea.
I think if, if, so I know it's a high school paper, but yeah, I think if all the buildings could contribute to that high school paper. I think it would open it up to the whole district of parents, right, to see what, um, and they could feature students from all grades or whatever. And maybe, yeah, we, we could, uh, each take turns. I mean, I don't even know if they have that section. I've looked at the paper, but I don't recall if they have a, a letter to the editor part of it.
And the idea of a school newspaper at all of the schools, I think, would be so great. It wouldn't have to be as professional as the high school newspaper is, which is, you know, really like a, a, a newspaper. I mean, it could just be like a one-page newsletter, but. Um, I think that would be such a, a great way for the littler kids to, you know, not only like inform the parents about things going on in the school, but also get them ready for being a part of the, the high school, um, newspaper, you know? Like everything else, if you play an instrument, you know, you don't, you don't get into the high school orchestra unless you start before you get there. You know, so it's sports, music, art, whatever it is, you know, writing. I think that would be a great idea. Um, you know, at, at each school level, you know, something simple, not.
And I know not the whole paper, but do they, I'm trying to think, do they have, um, you know, uh, Spanish-speaking students or even like Italian club or different contributors, so that maybe, uh, and I know we're like, again, it's supposed to be the students in charge of it.
Right.
But, um, in terms of equity, maybe a suggestion can be passed amongst and how that.
Yes.
There's a contributing person from the student body to the newspapers, K-12 or whatever. Whatever, it could be a poem in, in, in a foreign language. It could be in any language. It could be any student, but just different things that, you know, don't, it doesn't have to all be in English. I mean, it can have a page or two dedicated to, um, diversity and representing all kids.
They have a question section and they do take, uh, I haven't been many, but I have seen some questions come in in Spanish and they do respond to them in Spanish. I mean, the, the bare facts, they just wanna, you know, first.
Yeah.
Board, you know, so they're, they're top-notch, yeah.
They are.
I think we're gonna honor them at the December meeting. I think that was something for the agenda. Yeah. Um, all right, so we can put suggestions in then as a.
Yeah.
Um, let me see what else we had for hybrid. Um, some of these weren't, they were more school-related, so I'm sure, Dr. Banlow, you probably got some of the stuff, but just, I'm gonna read through some of the things that I, some notes I took, um. Um, sixty-six minutes was tough for kids to maintain focus. I'm not sure, because then at the same time, the next comment was that the remote, at the high school, the remote hybrid kids that zoom in, um, are allowed to leave. Kind of sooner than the sixty-six minutes. Um, and so while one parent complained that that was a lot of long time, another one saying that they weren't kept in for the whole time. You know, but, um, I know teachers are, are depending on the subject matter, managing that. Um, you know, how can we keep kids involved in sports and clubs during these times? Um, expectation, I think, Carrie, you mentioned this, academic excellence and, oh, and adaptability, right? And how, how are our teachers, um, being flexible in these times for kids? And I think that was one, yeah, will there be a pass-fail option for students with, you know, I E Ps or that are struggling? Um, you know, I know in the spring, there was a lot of flexibility allowed for students. There does seem like there's less flexibility right now, but it's still likely that kids are still struggling in these times and.
Yep.
Um, I would suggest parents just reach out to the teacher and or guidance counselor of the school. Um, but that was, that was in here about pass-fail options for students. So if that's something we need to inform the parents of. Um, some parents posted that kids are not engaged in board, doing, during minimum work just to get by. You know, I guess all kids are gonna be, whether we're back to school normal or in these times, I think that's probably something, but. Um, uh, I know you mentioned, Dr. Banlow, that there'll be some tweaks, improvements and changes with things going forward, so.
Yeah, there's committees meeting about many of the things that you're bringing up already, but.
Um, hybrid home get dismissed too quickly.
Dr. Banlow, um, I, and I know, you know, as the, the, the wave is rising, this isn't necessarily probably the time for anybody to be expecting this. But, um, there was a comment in there about basically the senior, seniors being able to do senior activities. Uh, you know, listen, every day of your senior year is a senior activity, so they're already losing so much and.
I know.
So much. Um, but, you know, I, I feel like, obviously graduation was amazing. And I, I feel like with, on short notice, with very little knowledge of the disease and how it works. And I know the numbers are gonna make these determinations, but, you know, maybe after the new year, maybe when everybody gets back for Christmas, you know, just to, to make sure that the senior year looks as close to. And I, I, listen, everybody in the building was working so hard to make it happen last year. I know that they will not miss the opportunity to do it again. But, you know, I think it's, it's, it's just so important, even in advanced, for the kids to know that we're thinking about it and we're working on it. And there's going to be the opportunity for certain things to happen. I think that's, that would be, that would be enormous.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Eric. Yes, absolutely. And I, I'll, I'll talk to the high school administration about that too.
Too, that we have to keep in mind, not just the seniors, but they, them principally, but, you know, all of the kids, that when and if things are canceled. Um, you know, it's really so important to deliver the message, um, in, you know, the best way possible and, and like to think, you know, to, to one person missing the senior picnic. Uh, they don't care. To somebody else, that's what they've been waiting for, you know, for four years. Or to miss the football season, no big deal to me, but, you know, I'm front and center at the Bear Den. Like, you never know what thing is going to, you know, sort of disappoint what kids. Um, so, you know, when, and when, whether it's a season being canceled, a, an event being canceled. Um, just to keep the, the feelings of the kids and the senior kids' parents in mind, um, all the time. Because, um, it's a big deal. And, and just because, you know, it happened last year, doesn't make it any less impactful if something, if things are canceled this year for our seniors as well. It's, it's just, you know.
Yeah, our seniors this year didn't even have a first half of the year. That's normal. So, and I, and I know that, you know, just having the board members that had so many, you know, children that were seniors, it was like front and center. So yes, absolutely. We have to remember that.
Um, a couple of comments were made about the disposition and or tone of, um, the board. And even the, some staff in school. So, I mean, with staff in school, you know, I guess everyone's just human and managing their own. Our, everyone's got frustrations, everyone's trying to get through these times. Um, but it was, I think it was a student that posted it. I was, the way I, it read to me was it was a student who posted it. Um, it just had to do with how they felt some of the staff could be a little nicer. Just for what it's worth, uh, that was stated and also our tone at board meetings. And it got me thinking, you know, we're in this remote world. We don't have the public right in front of us, which definitely does create a certain atmosphere. So whether we're, you know, like right now, we're all in Zoom, or even when we're in person and there's just no one sitting in front of us, it's just us. Um, it, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a negative post, it was more just one to, for us to pay attention to our tone at board meetings. That we may not realize people are watching and participating, even though they're not physically right in front of us. And, um, you know, if someone was in front of us, we might smile more, be nicer, or just be more pleasant. I don't know. But anyway, so that was a comment, something for us to think about. And, um, what else? Um. I think that was it for what I had for hybrid stuff. If, um, I had very little regarding remote, less came in for remote. Anyone else have anything about from hybrid world? No, so from, from all remote.
I just wanted, um, so I mentioned one thing, cause I remember when we had the tours at the high school, that they had the new format about the hallways. And I was wondering if Dr. Banlow can just kind of go over that. Um, I don't remember, I, I honestly cannot recall if that was already reviewed in past meetings about how they have like, um, that the teachers, like, I guess, if I remember correctly, they put them in a, a system or something like that. So the monitors know who's out in the hallway. And they're able to like kind of pinpoint, oh, well, here's like Sarah, for example.
Then are the teachers then informed because they may not know? And then, right, so go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's, I think, I think it's an app that it's called Passport for Good, but don't quote me on that because there's so many different apps that we use in, in, in the schools. And they started it last year, Daisy, where, you know, the, the, the kids could actually see like where their, you know, make sure what, see the weather classes, um, what time they need to be in class, or if they need to go out to the restroom, they can see if, you know, how many, if, how many, you know, what the availability is to go to the restroom. So there was all kinds of information on the app to help the kids navigate throughout the school day. And to help them to, to be accountable, but also, um, in the app was also opportunities for them to see what different clubs were available. Like there, it's got a lot of, in fact, it was something at NISBA last year, I remember, um, sitting through. But there's a lot of different capabilities for the app. So I hope that kind of answers your question. I can get into it a little bit more, you know? We can do a presentation on it at one of the board meetings or something if you want. Does that help, Daisy?
Um, I think just also, um, knowing, like, for example, when a student is out in the hallway.
Yes.
One of the hall monitors can, like, they know who is actually in the hallway and also like maybe stating the, how many kids can be in the hallway, just to kind of direct that specific, um, and, uh, answer that came in.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh, so for remote. Um, K-12. They felt remo- remote gets more, needs more attention. So I guess someone who was in a hybrid wrote this for an all-remote, they felt that remote gets more instruction and attention than the hybrid group. Um, and some, so remote, uh, they felt that for the K-five long computer hours, probably for like the, maybe the lower, the, the lower grades of that. Uh, they felt they needed better communication. Um, when, if there's going to be an interruption with the full remote day somehow to, for parents to be able to better navigate with their kids. And again, the board should observe to understand, um, advanced learners can handle more. And then someone brought up, I don't know if anyone else caught this one, the, the global comparison. Um, so I didn't know if that was misplaced, but it was in the K-five section about how are our kids being taught educationally and in a challenging enough way in this climate compared to other countries? And what they're doing and how they're managing it and educating their kids. I don't, you know, that's, that's a big question. Um, I don't know that anyone's got that answer.
Just know that the professional development committees that are meeting, cause a lot of these questions, they're looked, they've looked at. But they are, they have looked at research from other countries. So just, just to kind of.
That's actually really good to know.
Yeah.
That we're not just in our isolated bubble of Brewster. That was mentioned in one of the comments somewhere about, we do need to look outside. So I think if we can communicate that as well.
Yeah.
Assume we're not doing things, but thank you, you know.
Yes, definitely.
Um, teacher camera. So again, this might have been earlier on, based on the timeline, teacher camera issues. And tech support, who, who do they reach out to? But I think since then, we've done better at informing people.
Yeah, Jim did. He did send, he sent information out.
Uh, K-six, eight. Again, spend the day in the life of a special needs child and full remote instruction. Um, you know, so I, I, I get it, but they, unless everyone's complaining about something specific, we're not sure what the issue is. So maybe in a future survey, we can say, please be, you know, if you really have a concern and you're sharing it here, tell us what your concern is. Um, oh, okay, update, update Chromebooks. Again, tech issues, I guess, teachers, not, uh, too many emails, texts. Um, yeah, some of these, I feel like were resolved. This one, I didn't quite understand if anyone read it. It said equitable, um, and inclusion issues for all remote students. I'm not sure what that meant, whether it was maybe they think kids in, in. I'm not sure what that meant, whether it was maybe they think kids in, in hybrid are participating in, in clubs or things. I wasn't quite sure if anyone else read that comment in the 68 all-remote was how they interpret that. Let me see if I can see it real quick. Six, say, all-remote. Yeah, it's this one. So it's toward the bottom, it's like line seventeen, if anybody's in the spreadsheet. It says the upper grade schools seem unprepared to adequately, adequately address student learning with a dual system of remote and hybrid options. If the remote student's experience is any indicator of the district's articulated commitment to equity and inclusion. I'm afraid it's been lip service. Wells School seems hold on, inadequately prepared to offer equitable learning opportunities. So I, again, there's, there's no specific example. Does anyone have thoughts on what this could mean? You know, I want to address things that could be an issue that we're not seeing, but I'm not sure how to interpret that. I don't know.
I don't know that I can be of any help either. It does, it, like you said earlier, I guess, a specific example would be, would be more helpful, because yeah, you know, I, I, we really, I, I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, I have kids in the upper grade levels and I don't. I just, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, so I guess, Dr. Banlow, if in with the other parts of the surveys that you got, if there's something speaks to that perhaps.
Possibly, and then I, I'd also encourage that individual, if they're, if they do listen, to make sure that they, you know, reach out to us. So we can certainly address it.
The only thing I had for the high school was an issue to get elective supplies. I mean, I imagine if someone needed something, they would email the teacher and arrange that for the principal. It was mentioned, I think someone else, it might have been the hybrid with the high school and someone's request to get the kids in, you know, full-time. You know, to consider even just getting rid of electives, just focus on course, at least the kids are all in full-time. But I don't think that resolves the issue. Plus, I think electives really offer kids sometimes like a lifeline to still stay in school and be interested, because it's something they're interested in. Yeah, I mean, it's tough. Everyone, there were solutions, people did offer suggestions and all of these comments that came in, you know, as a public school institution where we are legally, you know, stuck with certain things and how we have to, to govern, so, but. I mean, hopefully, so that's, that's what I had. I don't know if anybody else wanted to add anything, but I know between this and Dr. Banlow, what else you pull from? You know, we're, we're gonna do a couple of new things, the board we've discussed, that I think are great and.
Absolutely, and we got a lot of great suggestions, not only listening to your, the board survey, but also our survey. So there's a lot of changes that we'll make, so people will be heard. And if they're not, you know, they definitely could reach out to us.
Okay. And the answers on, for the responses for, for these surveys, saying, I noticed that we did have one response in Spanish and it was translated.
Yeah.
Were they, do we have them some, possibly already translated and they came on here? Or do we, or do they, if they would have answered in Spanish, it would have came like that response that was, that is in there?
Yeah, if it was answered in Spanish, then Jim, Jim's team, the I T team will, will put it in English so that folks reading it, teachers reading it can clearly understand what the concerns of that parent is.
Okay, so, so it would come basically how that response looks, correct? So it would be Spanish and then, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And Jim can, our, our, our I T department can translate several million, lots of different languages. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, that, that would be one thing that I would like us to kind of look at, because it's just seeing, and I, unless I missed it, but just seeing that one response in Spanish is an indication that we definitely didn't. Either the, the Spanish community didn't know how to respond, or even just that literacy part, that's not there. I'm just having another approach to that, so we can also have that, that side of the voice being heard.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And that could be something we also add to the parent university, that the, you know, how can we help you with these surveys? That's a good point, Daisy, Daisy.
When we send out, so for example, at this survey, when we sent it out to the community, so when I, you know, I look in my text message, I see whatever written in English. Do we, I know with certain communications, we know cer, specific families that are, you know, whi, whichever language is their home language. Do they get it sent to them in that home language, that text message, or is it coming in English? Or, yeah.
That's a really good question. I'm, I'm almost positive it gets to them in Spanish, but I'll, I'll look into that. Because I know whenever we send it, right, Daisy?
It does, yes, because I get them in Spanish. In Spanish. And it, I mean, it, it basically does state everything in Spanish. And there is an option, if you want to translate it back to English, that you can do that. Where, in parent square.
Right, okay, good, because, because we do send it out then also in Mandarin, because Jim has told me, he sends it out. And whatever the name, the language is in the home, that's the way they get it.
So the recipients do know that they can respond in their native language?
They do know, and I know in one of the parent universities that I had attended, they also share that they can respond. And even if they respond to a teacher, like whether that option of messaging a teacher, you can send out your, your sentence in, in Spanish or your native language, and it would get translated in English. So the person receiving it will be able to understand and vice versa. Like the teacher would be able to respond in English and the recipient would be getting it in their native language.
That's great.
Yeah.
But it's just more like having, at least just like, because I know, even with the clients that I work with, my, my population, I know that it is difficult to say, oh, can you complete this survey? Either it's, it can be a time commitment that, that's not there, or other things that could be arising, that's not allowing them to, to finish or complete a survey.
Right, and even all the responses that we do get, this isn't a lot in, in light of how, how many families we have. So, you know, it's, it's understandable, too, that in the, you know, in a Spanish-speaking community, it would be even a lesser percentage. So the idea is to get everybody to get, you know, more, more involved in responding, because it is helpful.
Yep.
Okay, so I think at this time, we, we're done with the public work session part of our meeting. We do have exec to do. Dr. Banlow, do we, do you still have the update? Were you gonna call them? Yeah. I do need to get a motion to adjourn to executive session. We have our quarterly review for the board and the superintendent, as well as an update for the S C I U negotiations, I believe.
Yes.
So, and, and, and for the public, if they watch this at some point, no action will be taken. So I need a motion, please.
Scott, I make the motion.
Okay, Scott. And a second.
I'll second, oh, sorry, Francine, yours.
You beat me with the.
Francine goes after me, that's the rules.
Francine, guys, the second, okay, thank you. And all those in, well, how do you vote? Are we going to exec or not? So Carrie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Nice, Sonia, yes? Motion passes seven zero. We, it's nine forty-eight P M. I know, thanks for hanging in there, everybody. We are adjourned to executive session. And I'm gonna ask everyone actually to log out. And we have another link we can all log into for the executive portion. So I'll see you there in a minute. Okay, thanks.